City Council meeting for Monday, February 27th, 2017. This time can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocet.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Mark Whitehead, chaplain, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for this great day in our beautiful city. We ask your blessing on our council meeting tonight. We pray for wisdom in all matters discussed. Lord, we thank you for protection over our city from the recent floods that have hit so many of our neighboring areas. We thank you for protection over our citizens. We ask you to continue to keep your hand on our city, God, in your name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, chaplain. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to Citizens Communications to Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I do have one speaker card, and then I will also open it up and see if there's anyone that would like to speak. The first one is from Darryl, is it Cor- Corpral? Okay, if you want to come forth.
Thanks for letting me be here. I was just trying to get a yard sale. I had one last year. I'm moving to Texas, the 16th of next month, and I have a lot of stuff I need to get rid of, and I went to apply for it, and they said I have to come talk to you guys.
Okay, so you, I think we currently, what, we allow two per year?
Correct, two in a calendar year, and I did meet with, with Darryl last week. I indicated municipal code unfortunately is very stringent. There's no provisions for me to waive that. There are two per year, and he's asking for a third. He is doing it the right way. Obviously, we have people in the city who ask for, or don't ask, and have yard sales more frequently than twice a year, but the situation is somewhat unique. I don't have the authority under the municipal code to, to make any variances there, so he, he's coming here looking for, for direction from the council.
Okay, so I guess there'll be a couple of questions on how we would do this. I personally don't have an issue. I think, I think the whole intent was we didn't want someone to have a garage sale every weekend, and he has a legitimate reason why he would like it, and, and I appreciate him coming to the city and asking before just doing it. So I don't know, do we need, is this something, Tom, that we would take a straw poll, or what?
Well, yes, we do need that from you, but I would say to, just to flesh out a little bit more what you said, in light of the circumstances, that is the intent of the ordinance, the fact that he did try to go through channels, and under the circumstances of why he wants a third one, you could direct staff to handle this internally.
Okay.
That's what I'd recommend you do.
Okay, what's the, let's start down the line. What's the will of the council?
Yes, absolutely. I'm surprised you just didn't have it anyway. Most people do just have it, you know, and, and I still get the permits, too. I only had one this year, but still. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll direct staff to work with you to, to make that happen, okay?
So I'll just come back in tomorrow and go over there?
Yes, yes, just come back into the Finance Department. We'll take care of it.
Appreciate it, guys.
No problem.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda
Leonard Shepard, 2841 Fowler Road, number 71, in the town of Series, and I'll tell you what, that was a great move. That was what you guys just did, showed that you have compassion, and that you're willing to make a little bit of leeway for somebody who's doing it the right way instead of forty signs around, still on the power poles from last year. I congratulate that, you on that. But it's kind of funny. People were putting up signs everywhere saying, "Pray for rain, pray for rain, pray for rain." We got it. And now they're saying, "Oh, my gosh, you know, it's terrible." In the state of California, the idiots in the Capitol still haven't learned anything. We need to build, you, you guys probably all agree, we need more water storage so that our farmers can have water, and the little fishies in the river could have water. Instead, they, I call them environmentalist wackos, if there's anybody in here that wants us to go back to where we were in 1850, which I read an account of two brothers who sailed a boat from Sacramento to Bakersfield on Lake San Joaquin, which was the San Joaquin Valley, and the average depth of the, was about twenty feet. That's what happens when you don't have any flood control. And I, I just find it amusing that everybody's so worried about, you know, the conserving water, and, and the stupid's already said, "No, we're, we gotta keep conserving water, build dams, that'll conserve water," that's, you know. But I think I'm probably with all you preaching to the choir, so I'll let that one go. But anyway, that was a good move. Thank you very much.
There anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. Mike Miller from Series Firefighters Local 3636. I'm speaking tonight in an effort to gain your support for our MOU proposal that you'll be discussing in closed session tonight. Please don't take this as a lack of understanding of the ongoing and projected budget crisis, as we're all aware of our looming shortfalls. Here are just a few facts that we'd like to remind this council of. Our members did not receive raises based on class and comp studies back, done in 2006. We gave up 10% of our pay several years ago and have gone without cost of living raises for over eight years. We endured several years of frozen step increases and debilitating cuts to the fire budget. We are now equal to or less than the number 12 city, Los Banos, on the agreed-upon list of comparison cities. We have used, we, we used to have parity with the police, but now our mental engineer rank is four to $500 per month below an entry-level officer, and our captain ranks are $800 to $1,000 per month below a police sergeant. Our inter-level firefighters, they don't come anywhere near an entry-level police officer and a slightly higher than a non-managerial and code enforcement officer. We continue to lose personnel to neighboring agencies for better pay and opportunities at an alarming rate, resulting in, resulting in large amounts of precious general fund money required to hire and train new recruits. However, even with the mentioned deficiencies in our contract and budget, our members are still motivated to provide the citizens with premium fire protection and emergency services. I believe this department has been able to provide these great response times and truly professional service largely due to resource-sharing agreements with Modesto, Stanislaus, and Turlock Fire Departments. The items that we're asking for will have minimal, minimal impact to the general fund, yet show, would, would show appreciation for the many years of personal sacrifice from our members of this organization during such hard budget times. Please support our contract, or, excuse me, please support our contract proposal that you'll be discussing tonight. I do have several copies of what I just read. There's a lot of details in there. I'd like to have, give you a copy if I, if I may.
Do you want to hand it to the clerk, please?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
Thank you for letting him have his yard sale. I've already been over there, and I bought, don't tell Azavito that I bought more stuff. I got my water shut off for the first time since 1972 because I didn't pay my water bill because Toby told me not to pay the bill, and so I told the wife not to pay the bill, and she didn't even pay the water bill. So that was our fault, but we paid that, and we got that out of the way. There's, I'm gonna, I want to be, I want to ask if I can be on the next meeting, because five minutes is not going to be enough, because I'm going to go all the way back, because I've been on Facebook for not having my yard cleaned, I've been on Facebook for this or that, and everybody's laughing at me. You know I ran a flag football program for the city. You know I went down there and built the ballpark, built the lights, and, and helped down there for many years. The reason that they wouldn't let me coach down there is because the person, the president was from Dean Air, and I wouldn't let his kids play on the Walter White team. You didn't go to the Walter White school, you're not playing in, in the program, and everybody knows that that's how I keep it in series. So that, that, that's why they told me, he told me that I couldn't coach down there. A lot of this is the same as, as, as $40 for the kids to play basketball. Everybody knows that. Now then, I look in the paper, and I see the Arrowhead Club, they're having a tournament in Turlock, and it costs $125, and you're guaranteed two games. Go out to the baseball park, and it's $125, plus you gotta sell $40 worth of candy, plus you gotta get a sponsor, plus you, what? And these kids over at Central Valley is having fight and kicking kits, bullying. Why? The kids don't have a place to play. This is irritating me. This is, this is irritating me. We don't have a place to, for the kids to play, and what else are they going to do? What, what else are they going to do? This really frustrates me. And I was told that I couldn't run a business, or, so I got rid of my pipe vise, I got rid of all my thread tools, and then one of the people that worked for you, his pump went out in his backyard and pulling sand through his hot water heater and getting everything. So I called my buddy that I sold all, gave all my stuff to, didn't sell it to him. We went over there and fixed it, and he said, "You don't want no money?" And I said, "No, I don't want no money," and the other guy, he paid him. And he said, "Okay, if you're not going to take any money, here's some money. Whenever you go back to Texas and want your daughter play, you can buy dinner for Donnie and you." And I said, "Okay." So that's what I did. I didn't get any money. And then my other friend called me up, one other friend. He put siding on his house, and his leader wouldn't work, so he asked me to come over and fix this. I said, "I can't do it anymore because I can't take money." And he said, "Okay, I'll give you a bottle of tequila," or vodka, or whatever it is. I don't drink, so, that's what he gave me. And I said, "I don't want no pay for it." And he said, "Okay, just take the bottle of whiskey, or vodka, or whatever it is. It'll be in my cupboard for years." So that's what I did. So I, I'm not, I'm not getting any pay or anything from my... So the next meeting, I'm going to have it, when I, when I ran the flag football program, how many hours I worked down there, how many hours I worked in the basketball program, because your program, Cassie Baker, got paid to run your program, and Tracy Bull got paid to run your basketball program. Art Maylie, Jim Marshall, Burl Condit, Joanne Borges, Kathy Casey, and Paul Caruso gave me the Series Youth Basketball to run. I don't know why that the city pays somebody else to run a program that's not even Series Youth Basketball. It's the Hooters, it's the Hoosiers, or who, whatever it is. Okay.
Don, I'm, I'm missing the point here. What, what are you, what are you asking for us to do?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I don't know. I'm going to put it in, in, in the Facebook, too, that not only I have a dirty yard and a place that I have done good things, I've helped my neighbors. So I, I want to, I'm going to put it on Facebook that I, that I've ran a flag football program for the city, I've, I've run baseball out there, I put the lights up out there, and everything that I've done for the city, it's not all, it, it, I've been in there that, like, Limkey, Donaldson won't talk to us. Why should I talk to you? I don't have to talk to you. I've been running this thing for 25 years, and that's in the paper. So I'm going to, I'm going to start putting it on, and I'd like to have next time, and this is what I'm fighting, too.
Hey, Don, Don?
Yes.
Listen, I'm going to say a couple of things. Number one, as I got the opportunity to play, I think in the very first basketball that you coached, when I was at Carroll Fowler, back in 1980, 78, I didn't know what year it was.
I can remember.
And, and, and I watched you, just give me a second here to talk, and I've watched you this whole time, for the last 40 years, to see all the great things Don Donaldson has done, and I tell everybody, and I'll tell the Series Courier, that you've done some amazing things for kids in our community, for people, even coming to my house and helping me with my air conditioning unit, and just all those different things. And, and I see this, and, and I'm just, this is me and you, we've been friends for how many years? Long time, right? I will sit down with you anytime, Starbucks, and talk, and I'll go on Facebook, and I'll put all the great things Don does, did, because Don did do those things. There's no question about that. But not to cut off the mayor or anybody else, but, you know, there's only five minutes for the citizen communication thing going on.
Right, right.
And you're here all the time, and, and I see my friend unhappy, because I'm going to tell you that you're my friend regardless of all the things that have happened in this world, right? But I, I would love to sit with you and have a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, yeah. But it, it, that's not the only thing that's, and I know you guys don't have anything to do with this, but, you know, I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I'm, I'm other things, too. Determined to be a Vietnam-area herbicide-exposed veteran, and the other day, they sent me a letter saying, "You have to prove that you was in Vietnam in 1965. You have to prove that you was on a ship, USS Guide MSO 447, and we're denying you health care for that." And that, that aggravates me, too. You know what I mean? You, you serve your country, and you're over there, and they give you a medal, they give you everything, and then they tell you that you have to prove that you was on a ship in a combat zone. And that, that's, that's pretty frustrating, too, you know what I mean? So that, that's what I'm fighting also. Not only you people, I mean, this is not, I mean, I, we've got it cleared up with Toby and I, you know, with our, but things are just, it was in the paper, and people coming up to me and said, "Don, you clean your yard up yet?" "What do you mean? My motor home won't start now because I had to unplug it, which I shouldn't have never had to unplug. Now I've got batteries in there that's, I don't know what I'm going to do with." But things that happened, everything happened, and it shouldn't happen. You know what I mean? People don't come to me and say, "Well, Don, how come Limkey, you won't talk to Limkey? It's only one-sided. How come, when Azavito put it, they didn't come to me and say, 'Do you have?' No, you just go ahead and put it in the paper." I don't understand why they do that. I don't understand.
I don't know, Don, either, but I, we're going to have to move on, if you don't mind, and, and I'll be happy to come have coffee with you as well, and counsel.
Can I be on the next list?
I, I think it's best if we just kind of, to sit down with you separately, and then, you know, if, if we need to help you with Facebook or put something out there, I couldn't agree with you more, you have done a lot for the community, but I, I think we, it's better if that's handled separately. I, I don't know that we need to have the discussion with all of the other folks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, with that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have non-conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone that would like to declare a conflict of interest on the consent calendar or public hearing? Tom, just one question for you on item number eight, because I'm one of the applicants. Do I need to turn that over to the vice chair?
No, you could participate.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like one of the consent calendar items pulled for further discussion? Anyone in the public? Okay, hearing done, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the consent calendar items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocet.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. We have one public hearing item, item number eight, hearing to select a nominee for consideration of appointment as a city member to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologize to council for getting this to you a little bit later than we normally do, but on Friday, we did receive some information from the Air District confirming that this action needed to be taken prior to March 10th, which is before our next council meeting on March 13th. So we added this item to the agenda on Friday, amended it in the staff report as well. Just for information for the audience, this, this item is selecting a nominee to the Special City Selection Committee for the Appointment to San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board. Mayor Viera has sat on that board in the past, has applied for that, as well as an individual from the city of Patterson, Councilmember Dominic Farina. Those are the two applicants for the council's consideration, and in accordance with the, the board's guidelines, they require us to conduct a public meeting. We did schedule under a public hearing, just so we make sure that we get any communication from the public, and then council takes an action, and your, your options are to approve one of the two candidates, yourself would be one of those, or to not recommend a candidate going forward. It's up to the, to the council after hearing from the public on which direction you'd like to do. Once that's completed, if you did so, move forward, that resolution would be forwarded by the clerk to the governing board for their information and final vote process.
Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Just a question, that, it was some, someone from the city council represent the nominee, or, or what is this? I didn't understand anything Toby said.
Elected officials are required to serve on this board.
Okay.
So it's, the elected officials are selected throughout. There's a large city representative and small city representatives. This air board goes from, in essence, Bakersfield to Stockton, so it's a very large district with lots of representation across the valley. Mayor Viera has sat on this board before, so he knows it very well.
Well, I got no problem with that. At least we have one intelligent person on the board. Thank you.
So, thank you. Just a little bit of background on that, that I can provide. The, the Air District for the San Joaquin Valley is made up, the, the board is made up of one county supervisor from all of the counties in the jurisdiction. They serve at, as long as they would like. Currently, the representative for our county board is Ms. Olson. It was originally Bill O'Brien. And then there are two governor appointees. They are usually medical doctors, and then five city representatives that have to have a requirement of, I believe it's three, two, it's either two or three large cities, which means a population over 100,000, and then three smaller cities under 100,000. And the way that the legislature made the makeup of the board is when one large city is selected, then it discounts other regions in order to make up that. So in this last round of elections, Mayor Brazil lost his reelection. He was the mayor for Augustine, and a council member from Bakersfield, which was the large city, lost. As a result, the rotation went to, the city of Stockton would be the large city, and then the small city would have to come from Stanislaus County. No one from the city of Stockton submitted an application, so it defaulted back to Bakersfield. We had two applications submitted for the small city here in Stanislaus County. Mine was one, and then Dominic, who is a council member for the city of Patterson, was the other. All of the cities here in Stanislaus County will have this agenda item, and they will do one of two things, either choose him, me, or no one. And then, and then the candidate with the most city votes will go before the citywide selection committee, which is made up of all 52 cities in the Air District, and you have to get at least 31 of those cities to vote for your appointment. So there's where we are with it. This is the first step of, of that process, so. Yes, I, I did serve for six years on that board from 2006 to 2012, and was the chairman in 2010, so I'm, I'm a little familiar with what goes on there. Any questions of me, or the, or, or the other candidate? No? Okay. Again, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for direction.
I nominate Mayor Viera as a candidate for this board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocet.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. New business, we have none this evening. We have one discussion item, Finance Department, Utility Division, sign up for service requirements and procedures. Mr. Wells or Ms. Dean?
I'll, I'll start, and Suzanne can follow up with some information as necessary. So as council recalls, on December 12th meeting, during the Citizens Communication Section of the regular meeting, we had two citizens inquire about the process that was used by our Finance Department to sign up for service. Primary conversation concern was, were the requirements too onerous, or is there anything we could do to make that process a little easier? So as provided in the staff report, staff did some informal surveys of, of several surrounding cities and other jurisdictions, and provided the information that we use for the sign up for services. In essence, it breaks down simply, the detail again is there written, but simply, some jurisdictions choose a higher deposit or written documentation. We, we, we fall on the other end of the spectrum in terms of written documentation, requiring a potential user of our services to provide written documentation in the form of a rental agreement, if it's a tenant, or a grant deed, or some other escrow paperwork showing that they are an owner of the property. So that's our kind of default. City of Turlock, for example, uses a deposit that's about $350. TID similarly, but do not require any evidence of their relationship to the property. TID, if they don't have any evidence, will look back at three months of the previous, previous user's bill to establish their deposit. So that's kind of the two ends of the spectrum. From our staff's perspective, we recommend the procedures stay the same. We do feel it is appropriate, and it is very consistent and similar to what City of Modesto uses as our most common neighbor. We do, you know, do what we can to recognize unique situations and, and get the paperwork as necessary. There's always, as we heard today, some anomalies that come up from, from time to time, but we do feel as a policy that applies to all folks, this is the most, the most effective way to do it that we've found, and we haven't seen anything else out there to, the, the one-offs are difficult to set policy for. We set policy for that meets, you know, in most cases, 98, 90% of the time, and this is a policy we do feel is appropriate, but we would ask if council wants to direct us to change that policy, and if you were to move in the direction of more deposit and less written documentation, just, we would, we would ask that that be applied, you know, blanket across the board again, so that it's consistent, and that would be more onerous for some of our more lower-income folks, which is, hence why we kind of lean towards the written documentation part being more, more appropriate for our local situation. Suzanne, if you wanted to add any other to that.
The city of Turlock did indicate that they have issues with collecting, since they don't have adequate documentation on the people occupying residents. We have had good success with being able to collect on accounts that don't pay. The one issue we do have is our deposits are now so low, and with our rate increases, the deposits for sewer don't even cover one-month service, and our water deposit is about $30 less than the average monthly bill. So when we turn things over to collection, they're usually high-dollar amounts, but we have good success at collecting because we have But we have good success at collecting, because we have all of the documentation necessary to identify the people.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, I'm sitting here reading, and I was thinking about, you know, what do you need to get started? I mean, if you're a tenant or a renter, I think we should have at least two months' worth of deposit, which would be, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars?
The average bill is about a hundred and thirty, so two hundred and sixty dollars would be a two-months deposit. That's for all three services. For sewer, our deposit is twenty-five dollars, and the average bill is about sixty dollars.
Okay. Well, then, I think, I think we need to get deposits for at least an additional month, so you're paying the first month and last month. If you're a homeowner, my question is, is when it says and/or line, letter of credit, so if I own a piece of property here in town, and I get a home for a rental, I establish it, and as I'm fixing it up, I want to turn the utilities over to me. Can they just, if I come into the finance, can you just look at my past history on my residence that I have now, without me having to go out and get a letter of credit?
Yes.
Okay. So, that would be substantial, just telling you where I live, you would go back to my history, and I don't have to chase down everything else.
Right.
Okay.
But he would still need to show that he owns the property.
Yes. But he wouldn't have to go to another utility to get a letter of credit, because we have history, good credit here.
Okay. Any other comments before I open it up to the public? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Very none, I'll bring it back to the council. Just so that I can summarize here. We currently do not require deposit. We look for a valid rental agreement, whether you're a renter or an owner. Is that correct?
No, we do require deposits unless you have good credit with us or with another utility, and by good credit, we mean no more than two late payments in a one-year period.
Okay.
But we do require deposits, unless you have that letter of credit. And the deposit is refundable after one year with no late payments with us.
Okay. So, if I'm, if I'm a renter, I need a rental agreement and a deposit?
Yes, or a rental agreement and a letter of credit saying you have good service history with another utility. We take TID, MID, another city, PG&E.
How many letter of credits do we see?
A lot.
Really?
Yes. We have a lot of people that have really good history, and they bring those in.
Okay. So, your request is to increase the?
Deposit to equal to one month. So, if it's a hundred and thirty dollars, I think we need to increase it for one month.
Staff wasn't asking for that increase. We feel that where it's at, we're okay with where it's at. If the council wants to increase, that does, you know, provide some challenges to, you know, we do have, you know, a lower socioeconomic situation here, and some of those folks, that is, that would be a challenge for that to increase that dramatically. Again, the council can set that direction. At this time, we were not asking for an increase. We were just asking for the policy and procedures to stay the same.
Yeah, I think what we wanted to do is just try to make it easy for people to go over there and start service.
Right, but to me, this looks like it's easy. I don't know how, I don't know how it could be any easier.
I'm saying the same thing. I'm reading this, I'm with you.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's real easy. And I think the one meeting where there was a discussion, there was a separate issue of customer, customer service, and I think that needs to be taken away from this, and that needs to be addressed separately, because to me, to start service is really easy for the city.
But you go back to, if they have a letter of credit, they don't have to worry about the deposit.
Right.
So, if they don't have good letter of credit, at least the city, to me, is protected for, you know, at least one full month's worth of utilities. And you're talking about thirty dollars.
How?
When you're, when you're looking at other, other things that they got to put deposits on, they're renting a house, they usually have to put a deposit of, you know, a hundred and fifty to, you know, first and last month's rent and things like that. So, in the scheme of things, you know, I think that, that if you have a good letter, letter of credit, then you don't have to worry about the hundred and thirty dollars deposit.
Right, but not everybody may have rented before. It might be someone who's never rented before. Do we, do we have a lot of problems with people bailing on paying their bills?
We have significant amounts of money in collections, yes. I didn't bring the statistics tonight on what's in collections.
But we're, but we're very?
We're very diligent about getting that. They get their final bill, and then, within two months, they're turned over to collections if they haven't paid, and it starts hitting their credit report and affecting them.
But are we successful when we do collection?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Sometimes.
Councilmember Lane?
Well, you know, looking back and the reason why I thought we were having this, I mean, this is fine. I think it was on the customer service side that we talked about, that was more as what councilmember member Linda said, Rhino said. You know, I'm okay with this, but, but again, I heard something over here, if you already established credit, you've already established in the city, then they don't have to bring all that stuff in.
Well, no, they have to provide proof that they own the property.
Okay. Well, I think that's kind of where we were talking about before. How can we make that easier for somebody? And that's, this here is not showing me that. The rates and all that are fine. I, I don't see a problem. And I think Mr. Parsons actually brought it up, and I think he's wanting to stand up now and say something.
I think that it all sounds real simple. In, in my particular case, and my complaint was, sometimes it's not easy to obtain the, the, you know, title papers. It's not, and I might be out of town, a previous owner might be out of town, or I can't get those papers, and, and some, somewhere latitude and longitude could be given to, you know, I've got multiple bills here that are all paid, and, and sometimes it's almost easier if I wrote you a check, because I have that in my possession, but I might not have. And believe me, I mean, I'll be honest with you. In some cases, I might give you a bogus lease. I'm buying the property, or I'm leasing it until I get it. I'm not going to bullshit, I'm not going to tell you something that's not true. So, so when you say it's a simple situation, sometimes it's not, if you're a multi-property owner.
But what if you are buying property with three or four other people? And I think this came up at the last meeting, and you're buying it with three or four other people, and somewhere down the line, because you haven't provided that form, somewhere down the line, there's a falling out, and somebody doesn't want to pay the bill.
Doubtful that, that an LLC, which I don't own any property in an LLC, but, you know, where there's multiple partners, if they're property owners, they're going to pay the bill. I think you get a lot of renters that may not. But sometimes, it's not as simple as, let's say that I buy a property, and I don't have the paperwork, and I've got, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm going to do some work. It, it's sometimes not quite as simple as just bringing in the paperwork. So, my, my point at that point was, if you pay your bills in this city, somebody could have a little bit of latitude and longitude to say, okay, as soon as you get that, would you just bring us a copy so we have it in the file? I understand, you know, I'm not asking for special treatment to, but, but sometimes, it's not as simple as just having that paperwork in your hand.
Now, Mr. Parsons, I can, I can understand where you're coming from, but on the other aspect, be a devil's advocate, what happens if you tell the city that you took ownership of my property without the documentation? You switch the, you know what I'm saying? You switch the utilities over, and then, a month later, you say you want to shut off, and I'm sitting there going, wait a minute here. I own the property, but you came in good faith and told them, and in good faith, and I think what it is, it's protecting everybody else as, as, as the thing goes, goes forward. And like you said, you know, before, this was, this was a customer, customer service issue earlier, so that's a whole different conversation, okay? But, you know, right now, we're just talking about what they need to get started.
Just so you know why, you know, I wasn't able to obtain certain paperwork to get it done. And so, that was just like, somewhere, if, if somebody could make a decision, but I, I talked with Toby about this, too. He said, we just got to have a rule. Okay?
We need policies and procedures that are consistent across the board, and again, we're, Mr. Parsons' issues are unique in most cases. This is not what we run into every day. And so, we do feel like we've given Mr. Parsons the opportunity to provide written documentation, and that's really where we need, is something that we can stand on. We don't think we need to change the policy. He knows where we stand, and that what this is about is the council still consistent with that policy, that yes, we need written documentation. And if, the idea of latitude on what that written documentation is, I think it's already there. There's always going to be situations that are going to come up, where we're going to say, that doesn't quite fit the box. And that's where, you know, Suzanne and myself get involved to help try to rectify the situation. But a lot of times, you know, that's, that is the solution of us getting involved, and we, we always can't fix every situation, but we can generally come to a, a solution that's reasonable.
Right.
And that's what, that's what we strive to do.
Ms. Dean?
So, we've been, we being my utility staff, and I have been working with Mr. Parsons to try to accommodate his special circumstances. My staff is, they, they just want direction on, do they make these exceptions for everyone, or they, do they just make them for him? And that's, that's kind of what the question is. What are the parameters? How subjective is it? And what latitude do they have to make these decisions? Can they offer this type of latitude to every customer? Or, because we have it clearly spelled out, how do the exceptions apply?
So, is that what we're discussing, or are we discussing this?
I don't know.
No, no. We were, we, no, that's what I'm saying, that was a whole different conversation that needs to be taken care of separately, because right now, we're talking about when do you need to get started to get your service done?
Exactly, and those are the things that are needed, but sometimes, Mr. Parsons needs to have exceptions to this. And so, we've been working with him on those exceptions, but do we apply those exceptions to everyone? Which is fair.
Well, is it something you can use your discretion with, or is it, I mean, is that, I mean, how often do you get called in to something, or you, Toby, for something? How often does that happen?
For sign up for service? Not very often. Not a sign up requirement, no.
Yeah.
Not very often.
It's pretty unique.
More, more, more often, it's handled at Suzanne's level, but every once in a while, it's at my level, but I can think of?
Right.
Two or three in the past year.
It's a, it's a subjective thing, and so, when we start applying the rules subjectively, somebody's going to be able to claim that we're discriminating against them. We don't want to discriminate against anyone. So, these are the rules council has given us. If you want us to make exceptions, give us the parameters for making the exception. So, that's all we're asking.
So, and, Mr. Parsons is up here, maybe we add, if he'd be willing to write a thousand dollar check until he brought in the, the, I, I don't think we're going to have too many people that are going to write that kind of check, but that would be, that would give him something else, and we would have plenty of cash.
Certainly.
I mean, I?
Whatever, whatever the exception is, as long as it can be applied equally to everyone who needs an exception, we're perfectly okay with it. And as it is now, we're working with him every time someone comes in.
Sold in a thousand dollars.
I mean, that's what, that's what we want to do.
And that applies to everybody, right?
Yeah.
Just make it, just make it a thousand dollars, and then, when they bring in the documentation, they get it back.
Check back.
Perfect.
But, but wait a second, then what if they don't ever bring their documentation in?
And they don't get the check back.
Thousand dollars. Turn off the water.
And they're paying their water bill.
Mr. Donaldson? I, I mean, will be, if you want to make it fifteen hundred, I don't care, but doesn't matter, but, but there's got to be a solution, and I, I, that would be my recommendation if?
So, what you would add is a, a, just for practical matters, under, if you were an owner, looking at that sheet that you're looking at, what do you need to start a service? Under number one there, closing escrow paperwork or deed, or a thousand dollar deposit until that documentation is provided.
Correct.
Perfect.
Works for Ryan.
Okay, I wanted to open this up for the public again, because I see some people wanted to comment.
I think that's a great idea, because thousand, you made it fifty or seventy-five or something, but a thousand dollars, it's, the person's got to have the intent to, to do things right, because they're not going to give up a thousand bucks, just like, oh, yeah, I won't bring the documentation in, I don't care. At least me, to dig up a thousand bucks to put down as a deposit, I'd be straining my budget a whole lot. So, I think that's a good idea. This is the, what, second or third time you guys have got brilliant ideas? Thank you very much. I don't think that I should be talking if I didn't pay my water bill, but I own, I own rentals also, and eight hundred and fifty dollars. A person's going to move in, he's going to pay first and last month's rent, he's going to play a cleaning deposit. We're up there in two thousand dollars. People don't, you know, they don't have that kind of money. And if I can get somebody to come up with two thousand dollars to pay first and last, I'm going to pay the water bill myself. Put it in my name, and if I can't get it out, that's the thing. If it's in my name, they don't pay the water bill, can I have it shut off? If it's my property, and they're on there, and I'm paying the water bill, but they're paying the rent instead of eight hundred and fifty dollars, it'd be nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. If they don't pay that rent, can I have it shut off?
I think legally, if you're a property owner, yeah.
Are you sure?
You'd probably have to go through the unlawful detainer process, and so, we wouldn't recommend that, unless they were out.
Right. We don't do that to tenants where landlords are paying the bills. We do notify the tenant and give the tenant the option, though, to pay it if they want to. But we don't just go out and shut off tenants' water if the landlord's not.
Do the homeowners.
We don't want to go down that path yet.
We don't do apartment complexes either.
Yeah. We would want to go through the proper channels before we did that, so.
So, that's, no, no, I can't do that. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
But I'm still going to let them move in if they're paying, people that work at Walmart or Kmart or Taco, they can't rent my property because they don't make enough money.
That's a whole nother discussion.
I know, I know, but you have to get the right kind of people to rent your, your property, and now, the rent is, the move in is so much money, I mean, they have to make quite a bit of money.
You just need to lower your rents.
Yeah, but Mr. Donaldson, Mr. Donaldson, I think we're talking about the thousand dollars is for your, being a property owner? And let's say you buy two, a house across the street from you, but you don't have the documentation that you, you have sole ownership of it yet? So, you come in and you want to, to turn the water on, turn the utility on, so you can do any kind of remodeling, but you don't have the ownership? Then you write a thousand dollar deposit until you can supply the, the documentation, and then you get your thousand dollars back. That is, that does not go for a rental agreement. A rental agreement, knowing that they're a rental tenant, they should bring in a rental agreement.
Okay, that's okay.
So, it's mostly for a property owner is what we're discussing.
Okay.
Yes, and, and that would be the thing, the check would be cashed and held in escrow in a deposit account, and then, as soon as the paperwork's in, we'd refund it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there any other discussion on this item?
No.
Okay, well, I'll look for, we need a?
Well, this is a discussion item, so we'd have to bring back?
So, you got the direction?
We got the direction that we need, and if we need council action, we'd bring that back at the next meeting, but we will review that policy, make the appropriate information, and bring back if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to councilmember referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Yes, I would. I missed the last meeting, and there was a discussion about the, the TOT transit occupancy tax, and I would like to bring that up for discussion, bring that back for further discussion with the council.
Mr. Wells, can you bring that back?
So, last time we had, so there's, I see three heads nodding, that is, I see two heads nodding. heads nodding, so three heads nodding?
What's the question?
Wait, what are we nodding head for?
The question is, you brought this at the last meeting, to bring an item forward to the council from consideration of the TOT...
He wants to have a discussion about it again, because he didn't get to take part in it.
So if you were two and two before, and now you're three and two?
And what I'm looking for is that three of you would like to bring a formal discussion item and to agendize. So last time, there was only two, and a two-two is not enough to direct me to do that.
Is this for the TOT Advisory Committee? Is that what it is?
Mr. Klein's bringing it up.
Is that what you want to, that's what we discussed. The mayor wanted to agendize something to talk about a TOT Advisory Committee. That was what it was for, it wasn't necessarily the TOT.
Yes.
So that's what you want to do, is bring that forward?
I wanted to bring it back to discuss the TOT Committee.
Advisory? No. Are you asking for our vote?
Yes.
Okay.
He said yes, I say yes. Yes.
Recognized with the current level of items that are scheduled and considered for discussion currently, this is probably not likely to come until late April, early May, based on we are really impacted between now and then. So I just want to make sure, set the right expectations.
Okay. Ms. Dean, anything? Mr. Hallahan?
Hello, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. One item of note, a couple items of note. First one, Crow's Landing, the Crow's Landing Road, the San Slos County received a grant for, a planning grant from some state monies, and they're looking at the twenty-two-mile corridor, basically from Modesto all the way out to Crow's Landing. And there's a workshop tomorrow evening at six o'clock at the county ag center, looking for citizen, really, input of what Crow's Landing should look like when it grows up the roadway. So obviously, we have a section of roadway that passes through our city, if anybody's interested in that. The audience is clearly the public, but if any of you are interested, I can get you that information. That, again, it's an public outreach, looking at what the corridor might look like. The city of Modesto has taken some action recently of what they want to do within their limits. Our West Landing specific plan has a specific vision, so we're monitoring this. Mr. Jordan is participating in the program to kind of see how this might look in the long term, basically roadway configurations, median, no median, number of lanes, that type of thing. And this is a planning effort, again, using some grant funds that the county obtained. So that's tomorrow evening. A little update on the latest information on the releases from Don Pedro. The, as most people are aware, about a week ago, Don Pedro opened the spillway gates, releasing initially eighteen thousand cubic feet per second, putting basically the lower portion of Tuolumne River in the flood stage. Flood stage being measured at the Ninth Street Bridge at an elevation of fifty-five. It reached an elevation of about sixty feet. The flows were reduced to sixteen thousand cubic feet per second, and that's where they've been for the last several days. The TID, with R, the mayor, also wrote a letter of support, requested the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a deviation to be able to maintain those high flows, to be able to drop the elevation of the reservoir in anticipation of anticipated runoff. That request was denied by the Corps. Therefore, in the next two to three days, they will have to scale back those releases, which means the reservoir will stay kind of at its same level. Right now, they're releasing sixteen thousand cubic feet per second, and fourteen thousand five hundred is coming into the reservoir, so they're not making up much ground. And the snowpack above the reservoir is at two-hundred percent. In essence, what the Army Corps said was the downstream conditions where the Tuolumne meets the San Joaquin River are still, are more concerning than the releases from the reservoir at this point in time. So what that means is the reservoir will stay near capacity, is in essence at ninety-nine percent full at this point, with a very heavy snowpack above it. And everyone will be very cautiously and carefully watching the forecast as two things, that it is sunny, but not too sunny, and not too warm, because that means a higher snowpack is released sooner, or heavy rainfall that is warm. Those two things will create a significant runoff, which leads to higher releases from the reservoir. So obviously, we're watching it closely. Our lower river bluff is still closed, and will be for some period of time. The bottom nine of the golf course is closed as well, and that will be that way for some time. As those releases drop below the ten-thousand cubic feet per second level, which we'd anticipate in the next week or so, that will get it kind of below those two elevations, but obviously, those areas are going to be wet for a long time. And with the snowpack where it's at, we're looking at runoff conditions very high for at least into July. So a lot of water coming down the river and heading out to the ocean, which is very unfortunate. Last thing that I've got in the audience, Mr. Robert Ball is our new IT manager. He started two weeks ago, and so we're happy to be here. He's entering his third week this week. So Robert joins us. He's got a varied background and has an MBA in IT, or a master's, sorry, not MBA, masters in IT, and so we're happy to have him for filling some large shoes that Farron left us after a very long time. But we're happy to have him aboard, and then I'll bring him up to meet you guys when the meeting's over.
Great, Mr. Westbrook?
Planning Commission will be considering the preferred alternative, preferred land use alternative at their meeting next Monday for the general plan update. Expected that a recommendation will be made by the commission, which we will bring to the city council at your meeting on March twenty-seventh.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reiteration of Mr. Wells, that we expect the water to be receding out the lower bluff in the next few days, so we'll be keeping an eye on that and see if there's any impacts or issues or damages from the excessive flooding, and we'll report back to you on that.
Okay. Mr. Smith? Mr. Nichols? Mr. Hallam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Steve Hallam, Economic Development Manager. I just wanted to bring to you the attention of the council, the California Business Incentives Gateway. The State Treasurer's Office has established a web portal that connects business owners and entrepreneurs with financial incentives throughout the state to help them grow. And the city of Series is now on this portal. We're one of the, well, actually, I think we're one of the only cities in Northern California. We've jumped on it quickly. So far, we've profiled twelve incentives that are available to new and existing eligible businesses in Series. The website is the acronym for California Business Incentives Gateway, C-B-I-G dot C-A dot gov. And so I included my business card up there with that little URL address, and I encourage you to check it out. And we'll just keep adding as we can dream of more viable incentives that we can offer here to new and existing businesses. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I saw Ms. McCoy, but she's probably left or out in the other room, so. Gotcha. Okay. With that, we will adjourn to closed session. We have conference with labor negotiator and conference with legal counsel. And then if there are anything to report, Tom, you'll do that afterwards. And then after that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be March thirteenth at six p.m.